Hey Amber, Marcus mentioned that he might either be late or not make it tonight, so. Just for your info.
Ten four.
Okay, looks like it's about that time. You guys ready there in the conference room?
Yes, sir. Five o'clock.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call our February 2021 Planning Commission meeting to order. Amber, can you do a roll call, please?
All right. Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
Robin Bridges. Phil Chancellor.
Here.
Jana Jaeger.
Here.
Mac Lazenby.
Here.
Marcus Marshall. Warren McCord.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Bob Wrightenbaugh.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to go over real quicks for the attendees that there are, how we're gonna proceed here. The commission's gonna be presented with an agenda, with agenda items from the city planning department, and there's a representative for each of the genit, the. The items on the agenda, there will be some, a chance for that person, if they are interested to make some comments, they'll be able to. And then, once we get the preliminaries squared away, I'll open the public hearing, if it is appropriate, because. Some do not require a public hearing, some of these issues do not. And, and then that'll be your time to address the, the issue, the case at hand. I ask you to keep your time, if you do wish to speak, keep your time to talk for the five minutes, and please keep your comments to. Relevant to the case at hand, okay? After everyone's spoken, I will close the public hearing, and the representative and the staff will have an opportunity to answer any questions and respond to issues that were brought up during the hearing. Then I'll open the floor for the commissioner for discussions, motions, and a vote. The commission will vote based on state and local laws. The, the city's comprehensive plan 2030, and for the general good of the community. Having summarized the basics, how we're gonna proceed, I would like to say a little more about our role in. Dealing with subdivision plats, which we have a number of them tonight. By Alabama statute, a municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. With regard to the plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws. The city zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations previously adopted by this commission also apply. While public hearings are required on each of the, each of the preliminary plats, and we welcome any and all public comments concerning these items, please understand. That this commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements codified in laws. And regulations that I've previously described. Since we're on Zoom, the way we do a public hearing is, at the, when I do open the public hearing, what I'll be able to do is, those that are in attendance. I will ask you if you're interested in speaking to raise your hand electronically, you'll have a, a way to do that on your Zoom application. And then, once you. Once I recognize you, what I'll do is I'll turn on your microphone, and you'll have to unmute, and then you can speak. Okay, so the first item of business is citizens' communication. And this is a kind of a special time for a, a public hearing on anything that is not on our agenda at all. So if you have something to speak about that's not on the agenda, that's one thing you can speak on, or you can speak on anything that's on the consent agenda. We have two, two items on the consent agenda, and also, we have a packet, regular meeting minutes, and the. Minutes for our special meeting on STRs that we had last week. So at this time, would anybody like to speak? In citizens' communication. I see one hand who is Joanna Joanna, but you raised your hand a while ago, or you, do you wish to talk? Let me go ahead and, you can unmute if you have something you want to say.
Hi, I'm the captioner for the event.
Okay.
Um, but I need to be assigned closed captioner in order to caption into Zoom.
Oh, that's a good reason to raise your hand. Okay, I think. We can take care of that.
Yeah, Phil, I'll take care of that.
Okay, good, Greg, thanks. Okay, anybody would like to speak in citizens' communication? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along. Okay, the first item of business is the consent agenda. The content consent agenda includes. The approval of the mi, of meeting minutes for the packet meeting of 11 January, the regular meeting of 14 January, and our special short-term rental meeting on 25 January. It also includes Yarborough Farms Oakmont Phase One PL 2021 00042, which is the final plat approval. And Ash, and item number two, which is Ashton Lake Phase Three B. PL 2021 0077. This does not require a public hearing, looking for any discussion, motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the two items on the consent agenda and include the minutes of the packet meeting of. January 11, regular meeting January 14th, and a special meeting January 25th.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or any opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. On the new business. The first item under new business is Yarborough Farms Section J. This is a preliminary plat, PL 2021 00038, Mr. Howell.
Yes, good evening. First case tonight is, as you said, preliminary plat, or it's a semi-lot performance subdivision that includes 68 residential lots. And two open space lots located in the Yarborough Farms PDD, west of Andrews Avenue, and east of the North Point subdivision. It consists of approximately 29, a little over 29 acres, and. As you can see there, it's a base zoning district of CDB, surrounded pretty much on three sides by the rest of the Yarborough Farms PDD. And CDB elsewhere. You have the Shook Jordan Parkway to its east, and Richland Road to its south.
Okay.
Here's a copy of the, here's a copy of the plat. As you're looking at it, north is facing up here. It is. It has proposed density of 2.3 dwelling units per acre, which is less than the maximum for CDB. Dwelling unit and open space totals for this phase are indicative of the master development plan for Farmville Lakes PDD. There is a. There's two open space lots that account for about 16% of the base. And that is, in key, that's above the minimum for each individual phase in the PDD, with the CED based zoning district. There's an approved greenway that's planned to extend through the large open space lot to the east. That the developer needs to show on the, on the plat, other than that, there's no issues outside of the comments that are included in your packet. So staff recommends, staff is recommending approval. We've not received any correspondence for this case. Any other questions?
Is there, is there access to that open space on the right? I see where it is in the triangular area in the center, but how about on the right?
That's one of the questions that we included in the, as part of the staff comments that'll need to be addressed before the. Definitely as part of DRT, and before the, the file come in, they, as of right now, they don't show where that access would occur. The greenway itself is extends through Yarborough Farms Oakmont, which file was just approved as part of the consent agenda. That portion of the greenway extends along the, if you see my mouse here, that portion of the greenway extends along the road, Andrews. And would connect down in this road that's, that comes along the generally north-south within this space. It would have to connect to the open space lot somewhere towards the base, and where the greenway itself would continue to the southeast. At some point along there, and that's something that would be worked out with staff during the DRT process.
Thank you.
Mr. Slocum, would you, you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time, and ask that anybody that would like to speak on this item, please raise your electronic hand, and I will turn on your microphone. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any further discussion or emotion?
I move to approve Yarborough Farms 2021 00042 with all staff comments.
Second.
Uh, wait, was that 0042 or 38?
Oh, sorry, did I jump ahead a month? No, I don't think so. No, I'm the wrong thing. I mean, I'm on Yarborough Farms.
Need to be on number three, not number one.
It's item, yeah, item number three.
Sorry.
That's okay.
There we go. Item number three, Yarborough Farms.
Yeah, and it's a PL 2021.
00038.
Got it.
Sorry.
That's okay. We got a motion in a second.
Wrong thing.
We did have a second? Did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, Amber, can you do a roll call on this one, Amber?
Yes, Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Phil Chancellor.
Yes.
Jana Jaeger.
Yes.
Mac Lazenby.
Yes.
Warren McCord.
Yes.
Nonette Reese.
Yeah.
Bob Wrightenbaugh.
Yes.
Wendy Birmingham.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Item number four, Farmville Lakes Phase Seven Eight, 2021 0039. Mr. Howell.
This is a, this is an application for preliminary plat approval for a 68 lot performance single-family subdivision. It'll consist of 67 residential lots and one open space lot. Located in the Farmville Lakes PDD at the terminus of Farmville Lakes Drive, and includes 28.9 acres. This is on the north side of town, one of our newer residential PDs. It's off of Farmville Lakes, near the Eretz intersection with 280, and. Is just. To south of that road, and this phase is actually, this, this preliminary plat actually includes the, the last two, last two residential phases of this PDD. Together, um, they're, they do have a split zoning, even though they're both underneath the PDD. You have a CDD in the north and DDH in the south. The CDD district portion will have a proposed density of two and a half dwelling units per acre. And the DDH portion to the south would have a density of 1.5 dwelling units per acre. Both of those are well within the limitations of those zoning districts. The. Open space lot that they are including comprises a little over one acres, which is less than the CDD, or less than is. Minimum for a single face of a PDD. However, the, the PDD development as a whole has the requisite amount already. And so, one of the staff comments was that it just needs to, this plat needs to include. That portion of the lake to the north in it to be able to meet that requirement for the face, and so. If you see that note on there, that should, that should satisfy. This is a copy of that, of that plat. You have Phase Seven and Eight separated in general in this, along this boundary here. The open space lot that they are including is the far south, and so they would just need to include this portion of unaccounted for open space that's above it. It also includes, as part of the, the original PDD agreement, a connection of, with Monticello Drive. On, in going into Ashton, Ashton Lakes. This is a copy of the most current master development plan, and you can see here, we're talking about Phase Seven and Phase Eight in the southern portion of the PDD. Phase One is already built out. Phase Two is in the process of being built, as well as Phase Three. Phase Four is recently, within the last few months come before us for their DRT, after having already done preliminary. Staff, it recommends approval. We have received some, a lot of questions about the, about this, primarily as regards to its connections to Monticello. Right here. That was one of the main, one of the big points of conversation when this was originally discussed in 2018, as I remember. The, during that time, it was, it was agreed that this access point would, would remain closed until. What is now Phase Three and Phase Four were both built out and completed. And so, as of right now, three and four includes 42 lots. A little over half of them have some form of building terminal already being done. 18 of them are under active construction and five have been completed. So, they are moving along in that way, or in that direction, once Phase Four is, has received its final plat. Then, the, this connection down here would be, would be opened at that point. So it is, it is coming along much further along than be to either of these two phases, but they are progressing as originally planned. And then there's your subject ID comments for staff.
Um, Mr. Slocum, I assume you're gonna, would like to answer questions. How about if we do this, since you have a whole bunch of them on the agenda tonight? You raise your hand when you want to chime in, and I'll just leave your microphone active, okay? Let me ask a question. Go back to the plat, please. So how do you access that free, that open space down there, and, you know, on, on the, well, on the bottom as it's presented?
They'll have to, they'll have to provide an access season for the plat, or that lot.
Okay, and that's something you'll take care of by fight, by time you do final plat, is that what happens?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody would like to speak? On this item, please raise your electronic hand, and I will turn on your microphone. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, ask for further discussion or motion from the commission.
I move to approve, your case 2021 00039 Farmville Lakes Phase Seven and Eight Preliminary Plat.
A second.
Motion in a second. Amber, can you do a roll call?
Bridges.
Yes.
Chancellor.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Lazenby.
Yes.
McCord.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh.
Yes.
Birmingham.
Yes.
Okay, item number five, Farmville Lakes Phase Five B, PL 2021 00040. Uh, this is another preliminary plat. Mr. Howell.
All right, so this is again in the Farmville Lakes PDD, in a portion of that development just to the north of what we were just talking about. For preliminary plat approval of 24 lots, which include 22 residential townhomes and two open space lots. Again, it's in the Farmville Lakes PDD, terminus of Farmberry Drive and Harvest Drive. It includes about four and one quarter acres in that area. This is in the, in the more dense section of that, of that development. You have, it's surrounded by similar townhome developments, and will have commercial off to the side of it. This is a copy of the plat. This was originally brought before the commission got its initial preliminary approval. And. 2018, and it has now, because of that, it was, that preliminary plat has expired, and that's the reason we are seeing it again. It's fairly, it's fairly the same as it was originally. It does include one additional residential lot before. However, the overall PDD development unit count has remained the same, and so there's no issues there. The proposed density of this development is five, 5.19 dwelling units per acre. Again, that's less than the CDB zoning district allows, and includes still open space lots that comprise together about one acre. And it meets some requirements there as well. Staff recommends approval. We've not received any correspondence about this case.
Okay.
And it's.
Okay. All right, this requires a public hearing as well, so I will open the public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak? On this Farmville Lakes preliminary plat, please raise your electronic hand. All right, thanks. Okay, go ahead and unmute your microphone, and we'll be able to hear you.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. I am a resident of Farmville, Unit Five off of. Horse Path, and my property faces the phase that plans to be developed soon, and.
Go back to the, the plat, I'm sorry to interrupt. Logan, can you go back a slide so we can see what, where she's?
Mm-hmm.
Not the plat, the kind of area map.
Yes.
There you go.
That one. Yeah, so I'm between, in the pink area, Horseshoe Path, where that new development would take place, and my concern is the 22 units being developed. As the property was sold in my area to me, I understand that that was, that was this past year, July 2020, that that would be open space. So when was there exactly an approval of the additional units?
Well, we're working on that right now for the subdivision.
Or the initiation of that, of the unit.
There might be, this might be what you're, what she is seeing. This lot right here across from her lot is open space.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's still open space?
A portion of it will stay is open space, and the portion below that other half, that open space will be units, as was originally approved in 2018.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure if it was sold based on that, but that's, thank you for the clarity. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Question, comments, or motion from commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item 12, I mean, item five on the agenda with the staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. Amber, can you do a roll call?
Bridges.
Yes.
Chancellor.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Lazenby.
Yes.
McCord.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh.
Yes.
Birmingham.
Yes.
Okay, item six, Farmville Lakes Phase Five B. This is the final plat for that preliminary plat. This is. PL 2021 00041, does not require a public hearing. Do I have a motion, questions or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item six on the agenda with staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number seven, East Longleaf Town Homes, PL 2021 00045 is a preliminary plat. Mr. Kip.
Sir, good evening commissioners. This is a conditional use for, I'm sorry, is a preliminary plat request for. A 14 townhouse and two open space lot performance subdivision. The property is in CDD. Townhomes are permitted by right. It is located along. East Longleaf Drive, close to the Walmart here on South College Street. The. Proposed subdivision, like I said, consists of 14 townhomes, is within the appropriate density of the CDD zoning district, and is compatible with the future land use plan. Future land use designation. Not any major comments or concerns related to the subdivision of the land, but a few minor comments related to the. Building plans that will get reviewed at DRT. Did not receive any correspondence or concerns about it. And staff is recommending approval. We did want to just bring this to your attention. This is a non-binding concept plan for the overall land area. You can see. Kind of see the overall land area here. Various phases of townhomes, as well as some single-family development, and just kind of wanted to get that before you to, to. Kind of see what's coming down the line. Here is the aerial. And I did want to make a correction to our staff report. The engineer of record is hydroengineering and not foresight group. Just wanted to make that correction, for the record. I'd like to answer any questions.
Is a representative here? Who's?
Parker Lewis is available.
Okay, let me. Okay, there, Mr. Lewis.
Uh, yeah, Parker Lewis here, behalf of, to answer any questions.
All right, sounds great. Thank you. Okay, this does require a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time. Anybody would like to speak? Please raise your electronic hand. And I will turn off your mic, turn on your mic. All right, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Ask for any further discussion or a motion from the commission.
All of these lots are gonna have individual driveways on the Longleaf Drive?
No, sir. They will have. It's not totally, it's hard to see here, but they have a shared access across the front, so they'll have, I don't know if it's one curb cut or two, but they'll have shared access. Two. It is two curb cuts.
Okay, with only two curb cuts on the Longleaf Drive.
Correct.
Thank you. Did we do the public hearing?
Yes, looking for a motion.
I move to approve item seven on the agenda with staff comments.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second, Amber?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. On to item number eight, Swats fifty-one subdivision, uh, PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 four nine, preliminary plat approval, uh, Mr. Kip.
Sir, this is, uh, one of two requests relating to this property. This is the preliminary plat request for a five lot, uh, subdivision. It is in the planning jurisdiction, but outside of optimal boundary and obviously outside of city limits. Um, here is the proposed subdivision of land, um, all the lots meet our subdivision requirements. Um, and staff recommends approval, did not receive any, oh, did not receive any comments or calls about the property. Um, the authorized representative is Ledge Nettles and he did call, let me know that he would not be able to sign on. And he apologizes to not, for not being available, but, all right.
Thank you, this requires a public hearing, uh, we'll open the public hearing at this time for PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 four nine. Anybody would like to speak, please raise your electronic hands. All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, any further discussion or motion from the commission?
Okay, can we get a little bit of discussion on access to lot five?
Sure.
Is there, is there a question or some clarification I can provide?
Yeah, is that just a flag lot with a private driveway between those lots?
Um, it's not considered a flag lot, uh, I believe it's ninety feet wide here. Um, which, um, required is only, uh, sixty feet, so it's, it's a full, it's a full width, um, full width, uh, lot at the right of way. Um, there is an easement, a power easement that runs, uh, across it with the dash lines here. And so, um, they'll have to work that out with the power company as far as putting their driveway in and things like that, but that's, uh, between them, more or less.
If, if it's not a flag lot, what do you call it?
Lot, uh, lot of record, proposed lot of record. If it, it, it may, it looks like it's got a stem, but if it meets that minimum lot width at the front, it's just considered a regular lot.
And they're using, and they're utilizing the power right of way for their access with some agreement with the utility company.
I believe that is correct. Um, there are some cases where they can do their driveway with an easement, a private easement, not a public easement, to put their driveway somewhere else if they wanted to do that, and that would not necessarily have to be shown on the plat. We certainly recommend it, but, um, there are other arrangements to put their driveway elsewhere if that doesn't work out, so that's not a concern.
Thank you. This could, this back lot can be further subdivided in the future, is that correct?
Potentially, they, um, they could, at that point, it would probably become flag lots. Um, the maximum width would be fifty feet and I could do no more than two. So they could potentially do two, um, you know, carve off some land, some acreage.
Well, I, I don't know when our, when, when, when we're due to reevaluate our subdivision regulations. I don't think we've done it in several years. I, I hope staff that we will go back and look at ways we may be able to, to deal with flag lots and this kind of configuration, uh, in, in, in a more, in, in a more efficient and more planned way. Uh, thi- this could create, I think, some future problems. My assumption is that whoever lives on this lot would surely carry their trash and garbage out to the main road, that we wouldn't have any public, uh, any, any sanitation people coming in like this. But when you're dealing with these private roads, uh, like that, you, see, I can't tell how far back that is, but there is a potential public safety problem in addition to them li- living in these other people's backyards. Uh, or appearing in the backyards. This is, we need to look at these, we got another one later and I'm not going to raise this again at that time. And it's outside of our optimal boundary. But we need to look at what alternatives we may be able to provide a developer or incentive some way to try to keep this kind of cir- circumstance from happening very often.
I kept that down in, um, the notes that you and I discussed the other day, Warren. So we will definitely put that on the, uh, agenda or a review at some point. Um, I will say that the suburbs limit flag lots within subdivision to ten percent. So really, they would only be allowed one flag lot for the subdivision. So.
All right, so that might limit the further development, further subdivision of this lot back here, okay.
All right, we have a motion?
Well, I, I move for approval of, uh, what is this, item number nine, Swats fifty-one subdivision, subject to all of the staff's concerns and comments?
Well, actually, this is eight, the preliminary plat.
Okay, eight. I got optimistic and marked it off while I go.
Second.
Second.
Motion in the second, Amber?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
No.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, uh, item number nine is the final plat for the, uh, the previous item. Uh, this one's PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 five zero. This does not require a public hearing. Do I have any discussion or motion?
I move to approve PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 five zero with all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries. All right, uh, this is item number ten, The Oaks at Lobloki Creek, second edition. PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 five three, preliminary plat approval. Ms. Kennedy?
Good evening, this is a preliminary plat application from the Oaks Land Development LLC. Um, this site is within the planning jurisdiction, but outside of the optimal boundary of the city development. It's out on Lee Road eighty-eight and one eighty-eight, which, um, you can see Highway two eighty off in the corner. Um, so it's very northwest of us here. The proposal is for eight, uh, conventional subdivision, or, I'm sorry, eight lot conventional subdivision. Um, the few lots you see down here have already been subdivided out in several admin plats that we have reviewed. The plats being proposed are these here, these eight. Similar to the previous one, these aren't considered flag lots because of the width at the road frontage. We spoke with the county engineer and he was fine with this lot layout, pending some comments regarding uh, just labeling which slots would take access from which cut. And, um, we've not received any communication regarding this case and staff recommends approval with all necessary staff comments.
Okay, do we have a representative here?
Yes, it should be Jessica Anderson.
Okay. Ms. Anderson, if you're interested in, uh, saying anything, go ahead and unmute your mic, I see your hand.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear, yep.
Great. Um, I'm just here for any questions, um, that y'all may have. A lot of the reason that the plat looks the way that it does, um, is trying to balance y'all's regulation and the county's regulation, which is, is different. And so if we were working in one or the other, it would look, it would look a little different.
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, this requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. If you'd like to speak, raise that electronic hand. And I am seeing no one, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And then ask for any further discussion or motion.
I, I'd just like to make a comment. The width of the road is just a small portion there to meet the regulation, but that width doesn't continue all the way back. And it's kind of a way to meet a circumvent the regulation just by making the road frontage a little bit higher at, at the road. And I think the intent when it was written maybe was to have the same width frontage all the way back to the lot. But that's not what's shown here, and I guess the interpretation is this meets the minimum requirement. But it sure does create a, a problem with the definition of flag lots to me, thank you.
Hence another reason to have a discussion about that in the subdivision, Greg.
Absolutely, that's also on my list.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve twenty twenty-one zero 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 five three with all staff comments.
And we had a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion in the second, uh, Amber, can you do a roll call?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
No.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, item number eleven, this is, uh, the final plat for the previous item. This is PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 five four, does not require a public hearing, any discussion or motion?
Move to approve twenty twenty-one zero 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 five four, without staff comments.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Item number twelve, this is, uh, Longleaf Crossing Phase 5B. Uh, this is PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 eight two and is a preliminary plat approval, Mr. Kip.
Sir, this is a preliminary plat request for a, uh, performance subdivision and eleven duplex or eleven duplex lots and one open space lot. It is located in the, um, Longleaf Crossing PDD. Uh, so the zoning is PDD with an underlay or a base zoning of CDD. Here is the proposed plat, it would essentially extend down Downs Way, uh, with the previous, you know, similar to the previous developments before it. And meets the approved MDP for density as well as the CDD zoning district's, uh, density requirements and the future land use plan. Here's an aerial of the subject property and it would essentially, you know, as this, these development phases would eventually connect to West Fuddern's Boulevard. Uh, did not receive any correspondence with the public and just minor, uh, minor comments from staff. And we are recommending approval. Um, I don't know which individual in particular, but Barrett Simpson Incorporated is the, um, authorized representative.
Um, is anybody representing them in, tonight? Raise that electronic hand if you're, uh, an authorized representative. I don't see anybody. Okay, um, so this requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time for PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 eight two. If you'd like to speak, raise the electronic hand. All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments, or motion from the commission.
Uh, I've got a question, uh, will they pave the south end of Downs Way past Longleaf Court? And if they do, or will they have a cul-de-sac or a private turnaround, a temporary turnaround or something down in that dead end until it can be extended?
It should be paved to the property line, um, a temporary cul-de-sac is not required based on the distance back to, uh, where is it, Longleaf Court, wherever Logan's house is. Um, but typically, if it's within four hundred feet, unless there's an issue with public safety or environmental services, a cul-de-sac is, is not required.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item twelve on the agenda with staff comments.
Second.
Motion in the second, Amber, can you do a roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
All right, item number thirteen, Longleaf Crossing Phase 5B, this is the final plat from the previous item. It's PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 eight three, requires no public hearing, do I have any comments or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item thirteen on the agenda with the staff comments.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number fourteen, Somerville ABBU. This is PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 one eight, it's a, uh, recommendation for conditional use, Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, um, this is a conditional use application for academic attached dwelling units within the within the MDRD zoning district. So this proposal is not currently how the lot layout is. This is something that we've worked with and kind of come up with, the developer, uh, that will likely be shown to you in the coming months. But this conditional use approval is just for the four lots highlighted. Um, and these would be the lots that would be ABBUs, um, should you see to approve it to city council and I approve it as well. Let's see. Based on the student housing, uh, zoning text amendment that went through, it is conditional on MBRV rather than prohibited, so we don't see any issues with allowing this use here. Uh, there are a few staff comments, including, um, some regarding the streetscape along Harper Avenue that will need to be addressed. We've received no communication, um, from surrounding residents regarding this. And we recommend approval with staff comments. Uh, Parker Lewis is the representative, should be on the line.
Mr. Lewis, you have any comments?
Just be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for item number fourteen, PL twenty twenty-one zero 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 one eight. If you would like to speak, raise that electronic hand. Right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Questions, comments, or motion from the planning commission?
Make a motion to approve item 14, PL 2021-18 with staff comments.
Second.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. Amber, can you do roll call on this?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Item number 15, SIO2 Distribution Center, PL 2021-00036. This is a conditional use approval for an expansion of an industrial use. Mr. Kip?
As stated, this is a conditional use request from SIO2 Medical Products Incorporated. It is, you previously saw a very similar request not too long ago. It was back in December, yeah, December of last year, for the original, the original building. You can see here, that was approximately 90,000 square feet. This is a request to expand that building footprint by 30,000 square feet. It is in the industrial zoning district and meets all those zoning and site design requirements. So staff is recommending approval, and we did not receive any correspondence.
Okay, do we have a representative by chance? I don't.
Terry Doyle from Bailey Harris, excuse me.
Let me see, are you on here? I don't see him listed. Okay, it doesn't look like he's in the crowd. Okay, so this does require a public hearing. So I'm gonna open a public hearing at this time for PL 2021-00036, SIO2 Distribution Center. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
Ms. Chairman, make a motion to approve the SIO2 Distribution Center expansion, item 15, with staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Amber, can you do roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Item number 16, Builders First Source Expansion, PL 2021-00046. Conditional use approval recommendation for an expansion to an current use. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, this application comes from Donald Allen, who's the representative for the property owner at Builders First Source. As you stated, it's an extension of an existing approved industrial use in the industrial district. The site plan, they're looking to expand the building on its back end for just warehouse storage purposes. There would be no increase in employee shifts, so no need for parking, reconfiguration of parking, or anything of that nature. No pressing staff comments, except that this building corner will need to be shifted over to be kept away from the sanitary sewer easement. That's been discussed with the developer. Doesn't seem to be a problem. I have received communication from the property owner to the south. They just wanted to ask information about what was going on behind them. As I said, staff has no pressing issues, so we recommend approval with staff comments. And Parker Lewis is on representing for this case.
Okay. You got anything there, Mr. Lewis?
I'm here if needed.
Okay, thanks. This requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna open a public hearing at this time for PL 2021-00046. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand. Right, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing and then ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
I move for approval of PC case 46, Builders First Source Expansion, conditional use, subject to all of the staff comments.
Second.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. Amber, can you do roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Alright, item number 17, PL 2021-00051, Mem's Trail amenity area. Mr. Kip?
Sir, this is a request by Clayton Properties Group Incorporated, represented by Brett Blasman of Forsyth Group. This is a request for a subdivision amenity lot. The ordinance calls out that new subdivision amenities are required to go through the conditional use process if they're over 500 square feet and not on an existing amenity lot. So for that reason, this is before he has a conditional use. The subject property is in a PDD, the Mem's Trail PDD, at the base sounding of LBD, surrounded essentially by the same various phases of Mem's Trail. The site plan that was submitted contemplates a 12,112 square foot clubhouse and a 2,400 square foot pool for use by residents of Mem's Trail subdivision. The site plan that was submitted more or less meets all the requirements, but we will continue to review it through the DRT process. Here is an aerial of where the proposed amenity lot would go, and the staff recommends approval and has to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, this requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time for 2021-00051, Mem's Trail amenity area. It looks like I have Ms. Dunn is raising her hand, so I will open up her microphone. You can unmute and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Danielle Dunn. We live at 2,400 Rutland Road, which is the corner lot right next to the proposed pool. I have several questions. The first one is, how wide is that drainage easement?
Let me, let me ask first. Go ahead and ask your questions, and then we'll address them, so.
Sure. How close will the clubhouse pool be to the drainage easement? What are they going to provide for screening of the noise nuisance for the pool? More information about the final landscaping? We ask that there be a minimum of an eight-foot fence because, you know, we're gonna have all those kids out there in the morning screaming and carrying on. What is the timeline for the build?
Did you, on your last question, did you say something about a fence? Did you say eight-foot fence is what you were looking for?
Correct.
Okay.
I just need to know, you know, what they've got in place to diminish that noise because it's basically right in my backyard. And we bought from the Cleveland Brothers, and I know they sold out, but never in any of those plots did we see a pool or a clubhouse. And, you know, when was that approved on, I guess, by the next developer?
Well, that's what we're addressing right now.
Okay.
Yeah, this will go as a recommendation, depending on what we vote on to the city council, who will approve it or not. So that's another time where you can voice your opinion.
Okay, we just feel like it will diminish, you know, the value of our home to have that right in our backyard.
Okay. Is that all your questions?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, hang on one sec here. Okay, it looks like Desmond and Cheryl Lane, you can now turn on your mic and say something there.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Lane, and I live at 2366 Rutland Road. My property does adjoin the proposed amenity lot. When we purchased our home, just like the previous caller, this has been open space, and to suddenly have the developer propose putting in a pool and a very large clubhouse is something that we are in disagreement with. We would hope that the developer would choose another location in the subdivision that is not developed yet, or that is, that hasn't, you know, that is still under design and development, rather than putting it adjacent to people who have already been living here for two to three years. So I would encourage you all to please not approve this conditional use. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next person, Mr. Methur. I hope I didn't butcher your name too bad. Go ahead and speak.
Yes, Mathier, that's close. Yeah, we're, my name's Ron Mathier. We live at 2392 Rutland Road, and our rear property line will be about 50 feet from this, from the pool. So we're concerned with this. Like the other speakers, we're surprised by the proposal. It was never in any previous Mem's Trail plans. When we bought our house about three years ago, we knew that it'd be new homes, which we understand, but this area that we're talking about here was always discussed and described and designated, I don't know, how insurance or legal ideas as a green space community area. So our concerns about the use of the land. About two years ago, the area was also graded to be a detention pawn for all of the stormwater runoff from the homes to the north, and it routinely floods when we have heavy rains. So we're concerned about how that would be addressed with this kind of of construction, which would add a lot more impervious area in addition to the existing runoff that's already there. And then we also have concerns about the lighting, like the other speakers. This'll, this'll change things for us. We'd like to know more information about how it'll be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Marilyn Furlong, go ahead. You just have to unmute your microphone.
Amber, can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, well, I live next door, we live next door to Mathier's, and we have a lot of the same concerns. Traffic, for one thing, on Rutland Road is already bad enough without having every house and ward coming across here to get to the pool. I'd have, really go off the pool should be located in among the houses built to the north, because this is only three and a half blocks from the front porch. That's really not giving them one of their own, so to speak. So I think that would be a better way. Also, the Mathier's and us and another house right there that is gonna be impacted, we don't have privacy fences, and we didn't want to put privacy fences up because we got here for the view and to have no one behind us. We looked at where the cul-de-sac was planned to be built, and there was gonna be three, and now I've been built back this quarter. Now I have five cul-de-sacs. They're plus all the smart homes north of there. So I'm really saying not approve it either for the several reasons other people upset. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Bickers? Well, hang on a sec. Okay, you should be able to, there you go.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, fantastic. So I think there've been a lot of great.
Oh, sorry, cut you off by mistake. Try, wait a minute. Who was, raise your hand again, sir. Mr. Jordan Bickers? There we go. Just wanna make sure I, bear with me here. Alright, now try again. Go ahead and unmute.
Okay, we're good?
We're good, sorry about that.
Right, we made it, okay. So, yeah, I mean, I think there've been some excellent points made so far. I pretty much would just like to echo that. I have a lot of the same concerns. We also have a lot that is.
Okay, you give us your address, I'm sorry.
It is 2417 lot, I think Meadow Cove.
Okay, thanks.
So obviously, very close to the area. It also, I just, you know, we also just urge that this not be approved, really. I think we were told when we were moving in, you know, we paid a premium for this lot, and we're told multiple times that this would be maintained as just a green space, and would like to see that followed through with. I also think that while our neighborhood probably does need a new pool due to the expansion and the growing number of people, it's also very close to the other pool. I think that will create traffic and could kind of create problems. These two being too close together, to me, it makes more sense to look into development in the newer, newest section of the neighborhood where there are still homes that people have not bought, built their homes. So if you were to develop there, they know, hey, there's going to be a pool in this area, and they understand that coming. I don't have anything else other than that.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Amy Stuckey, go ahead. Unmute your microphone, we can hear you.
Yes, this is Amy Stuckey. My husband and I are at 2384 Rutland, so I think we're like the fifth lot. And I wanna echo what everyone else is saying, and also, you know, as, as the traffic to Fountain View has increased, which is an entertainment venue, putting a clubhouse and a pool at that same place on the road has some concerns for the flow of traffic there as well. So I would hope that y'all would not approve this tonight so that we could look further into it, because as we look ahead to Harrisstool's plans for this neighborhood, there's about 250 more houses that are gonna be built. So there seems to be a lot more acreage that they could put this on to better serve the whole community here. So that's it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, I'll close the public hearing at this time and open it up for discussion or a motion.
Well, I've got a question first, and then.
And I do wanna address the questions too as well. I got a number of them there that it's, when you're done here, I'm gonna rattle through them there with Katie. Go ahead.
So if you wanna go ahead and answer the questions, that's fine. I've just got what I've heard, and, and as I understand it, this lot was shown, is this lot shown on the PDD as an open space?
It is. I don't know if it included, we did not include the MDP, unfortunately, but it is in your packet. It's a little purple rectangle. It's not clearly labeled as a menu lot, but. It is in your packet. It's a little purple uh, rectangle. Um, it's not clearly labeled as a MEMI lot, but um
I accept that. That's, that's, I know that we often allow amenities such as pools to be placed on open space uh, areas because for the most part it is open, but I must admit that a pool and a clubhouse has different impacts on the adjacent properties than just passive open space that's available to everybody in the community. Therefore, uh, it would seem to me the developer is, is trying to take to make it easy on himself. I I understand as the neighborhood grows, more, one pool does not serve everybody. But putting a pool on this particular lot where other people have already made their investments as opposed to having it designated as an amenity lot in a subdivision plat allows the buyers to beware. And therefore, I'm concerned about this unless we place some heavy before uh, standards on this thing, performance, development standards on this thing in order to mitigate the, the potential impacts on the adjacent properties. Oh, so that, that's, that's my concern, but I know you've got to answer those questions and let's
Yeah, let's, let's run through a couple of those real quick. So I, I didn't, I don't gather, we don't have a representative here today, or do we?
Brett, Brett Baslin is
All right, let me fire him up here. All right, Mr. Baslin, maybe I can address these to you. Um, uh, uh, let's see. One of them had to do with um, clubhouse. I can't even read my writing. Well, let me, let me skip here until I can figure that one out. There's, what about any kind of screening, fencing? Uh, we talked about they don't have any privacy fences. Is there gonna be some sort of a talk about the landscaping and the uh, any kind of mitigation for noise and that sort of thing you were considering?
Yeah, I mean, we would typically landscape and screen uh, around the pool, especially up against the houses there to uh, mitigate uh, uh, noise and that's, and that's so, so, yeah, I mean, we would have uh, we would, if, if the houses don't have some of the houses do have privacy fences, some of them do not, but we would definitely be screening them with heavy landscaping for the noise dissipation.
Okay, what's the, the timeline for building this thing out?
This, it's probably within the next, I don't know, twelve to twenty-four months. It's not, it's not slated to go right this minute, no.
Okay. Uh, and how are we dealing with uh, any kind of lighting issues? Um, is there any sort of
Well, the city has, the city has lighting requirements, but it couldn't be a heavily lit uh, area. Uh, typically, you know, these pools close at dusk. Um, and so, you know, I don't think the intent is for this thing to be lit up and be uh, open late into the evening. On the clubhouse side, it's really just a pavilion. It's an open-air pavilion that would have a, you know, bathrooms and a, and a pump room. It's not, it wouldn't have uh, it's not gonna be like a conditioned uh, clubhouse. Uh, but it's more gonna be an open-air pavilion with bathrooms and uh, tables and that kind of stuff for the um, for what's shown there is the clubhouse.
Phil, the first question had to do with the easement, something about the width of the easement.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah.
I'm not sure if this is what she was referring to, but there is a ten-foot drainage and utility easement that's shown here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, that's a, a platted easement. We're not planning to use that.
Um, let's see. There's a twenty-foot drainage utility easement here that would go along the back. And
That's the sewer through there up there.
I think it pertained down to one at the bottom. Yeah, who's that?
That's just a standard, standard ten-foot drainage utility that runs along most, the front of most lots in the event that utilities are needed there. Um, I don't know where they actually, which side of the street the utilities are actually on, but
And the access to the parking lot where it crosses MEMS Trail, what, what, is that crossing the driveway for the mansion? Is that what I'm looking at?
The mansion driveway is gonna be reconfigured. Right now, the mansion property, the mansion driveway is not on the mansion property. It's over on the residential property to the south there.
Okay.
Uh, we're reorienting their driveway so that they can save their trees and columns and everything that they have in place right there. There's already an existing access easement in this location that has a drainage and access easement that provides us access to uh, this, this, the open space from the south.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Ken, looking at my notes here, I think that kind of addressed all those different questions. Um
Has the developer met with the, I'm assuming there's an HOA. I mean, have they, have they met and discussed this with the residents at all? I'm just curious what the communication's been with the neighborhood.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if what they have and haven't done.
Um, Logan, is, do, do you have a copy of the master plan that you, that was in our packet that you can put up or no?
Not, not available to me now, fortunately. Um
Okay.
Does this require, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just was gonna say, are we talking about, um, I don't know if you even have it available to look at to answer my question. Are we talking about the little purple triangle? I think Katie said something about it being purple.
That's it. That's the one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And what's that noted as part of the PDD? Is that just noted as not an amenity area, noted as a open space?
Katie's saying, previously Katie had done most of the MEMS Trail um, development and so she thinks that may have been marked as commercial at one point.
And I say that only because the mansion is also purple?
Oh, okay. Well, so if that's part of a PDD, don't, that is, are, is it here before us because we're adjusting the PDD?
Uh, no, it's before you because the zoning ordinance states that any, any uh, structures on amenity lots that are greater than five hundred square feet require or view as a conditional use.
Oh.
Can I ask Brett one more question?
Yeah, he's, he's
Yeah, I'm curious just about the orientation of the clubhouse and the pool on this space. Um, at, obviously with what we're looking at, I can't see kind of what's behind it, but is there, is there the possibility of reorienting that on that lot so the pool is not so directly behind those existing homes? Or there are already homes to the other side as well? Just trying to think of a way to move that pool back from the backyards of those homes just a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, how, how far? I mean, typically, you know, the sun rises east to west, so we try not to uh, provide too much. But I mean, if orientating it and rotating to get the clubhouse as a, as a separation to the west against those other homes, I mean, I, I think that we can probably work around and make that work, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious if that is something that might appease the current homeowners a little bit and make that amenity a little more favorable for them, which is why I asked if they'd had a conversation with the developers about it.
Yeah, Brett, let me, this warning again. Um, you call it a clubhouse, but then I thought I heard you say it's only a pavilion with bathrooms.
That, that's correct.
So really, it's not a clubhouse. Is that correct?
Correct. It's just an open-air pavilion with, you know, women, men and women's restrooms. And then uh, you know, there'll be a pool equipment room, so the equipment and storage, you know, a majority of that's just gonna be open air.
And that's in front of the pool facing what will be the drive, the street.
Good gracious. Hey, can you go, go back a slide to that uh, bigger view? No, not that one, the, that one right there. Uh, where's the other pool? Okay, right up there.
That's a half a mile away.
Okay, and that's
On that lot with this pool bay, looking at it from this larger, okay.
I think that's an excellent suggestion to reorient that pool. My question was what, what prevents us from moving the whole thing a little bit further to the east and getting away from those existing homes as much as we can? And I didn't hear any uh, commitment or comment concerning the eight-foot fence.
That, just from the staff, the zoning ordinance perspective, they, the pool is required to have a minimum four-foot fence, but that's just around the pool area for safety. Uh, nothing about, I mean, there's required landscaping. Uh, it would be in their, in the staff report, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-four total tree inches um, and three-hundred-and-thirty-six shrubs.
But, but no fencing required?
No, no, yeah, just around the pool.
Now, would a same fencing would follow along with their HOA covenants for height and type of fencing and whatnot?
Well, there's, we're talking about two different things, I think, even though they're both called fences. One is a safety fence around the pool.
Correct.
A longstanding requirement, but the residents had mentioned something to shield the entire pool area, an eight-foot fence. And I'm familiar with some subdivisions that have eight-foot fences and it makes all the difference in the world with reference to uh, noise and lighting and separation from residential areas. And it may not be required, but I think we're kind of suggesting to mitigate with these existing property owners, that the developer would at least consider doing something like that, because that is a real attractive amenity uh, adjacent to residential areas.
May, uh, uh, I might wanna disagree with you there, Mac, in terms of we can't require, we can require, this is a conditional use and we can place any standards on this that will make it compatible with the location that it's, where it's sitting. So we can require an eight-foot fence or other measures if we think that would make it compatible and mitigate some of the, some of the obvious, uh, not just because they think it's gonna happen, but we know that swimming pools in neighborhoods, and I've put on our homeowners association board and we field complaints all through the year, but in particular the summertime about activities that take place at our pool. So amenities are wonderful, but they need to be properly placed and placed and identified ahead of time in a planned way. Which brings me to the question, Brett, how much of this other, this area is still unplatted? Anybody?
The area to the north is all platted. The only area that's not platted is to the south.
All right, well, the south. What I'm saying is, is that as this, recognizing the need for additional pool, have no problem with that at all. However, it needs to be planned like the rest of the property will be planned. And therefore, I'm, I am considering, I, I would think it would be wise as the other part of this development, PDD, is developed and built out and planted, that an amenity lot for a, an additional pool be so planned as opposed to going into what was originally planned to be just passive open space and putting a pool in it after people have built their homes around it. Then if you plant it as an amenity lot, then it's the buyer beware. They know if they buy the lot adjacent to it, they're buying it adjacent to the city amenity, I mean, a community amenity. So to me, that's, that is a much more reasonable approach than us try to shoehorn in on amenity here and mitigate its uh, impacts on the adjacent properties.
But I may I agree with you, Warren.
I agree too.
Hey, Warren, can I, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
Um, this is the reason why these are conditional uses after the fact. Um, however, a swimming pool and clubhouse is considered a recreational open space.
Yeah, I understand that.
And that is how the subdivision plat was platted. So it does say recreational open space on the lot itself and not passive. We require them to specify the type of o- open space it is on the plat. But as you mentioned, if it is not shown as an amenity lot on the plat, that is why we require the conditional use because of this right here.
Yeah, the reason required it is, is a conditional use is that we know that it has impacts.
Correct.
And not, not just uh, easy to place anywhere.
Right.
Yeah, I, I agree with uh, Mr. McCord's comments and uh, about conditional uses. And I don't think in, in general, we have required enough improvements to some of the conditional uses we've approved in the past, but that's, that's past tense. And I was just trying to make my suggestion a little bit more congenial where it could be voluntary, voluntarily done by the developer and he, he kind of keep peace in the neighborhood if he would volunteer to do that as opposed to us maybe bringing down the hammer and saying that it uh, is absolutely required. But uh, but I, in my vote, if, if they did not take advantage of volunteering a, an eight-foot separated fence, I, I would go to the position of it being required. And I would like to know why we can't move this just a little bit further to the east and get away from those homes.
Talking about wanting to shift it.
Yeah.
What, what separation do you feel like you would, you, you wanna see there? I mean, is there room to move it? Yes, there's room, there's room to move it there, but I mean, how, how far, you know, are you, are you, are you wanting, are you wanting fifty feet of separation from the pool deck, a hundred feet? You know, what, what's, what do you kind of, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm thinking to, to move it an optimal amount without creating uh, an overburden or uh, with expense and that sort of thing. I don't know that there's a set distance that I would, would give or, but I, I think the, the, the attitude of trying to be compatible and adjusting to the neighbors' wishes and moving it as far as you can and see, see what that looks like.
Well, if you measure too
Sorry, can we see the area, can we see the aerial view again, please?
Sure. And just for reference, this, uh, from this corner to the property line is approximately a hundred and two feet. A hundred and two feet.
How far is it from that back corner to that uh, lot number two-eighty-five?
Um, sorry.
The, the back corner of the pool area, the pool pad there, yeah.
That I do not know.
Looks less, but not a whole lot.
That was my thought and possibly turning the site. And I don't know what's all involved in that, but to put the pool kind of as far away from those homes as possible with the, maybe the parking in between the homes and the pool.
Have the lot in the curve to the north already been sold? Because are we just giving those people a problem that we're taking away from the ones on the left?
Yeah, that's where I was wondering too. I'm sure this is an old aerial.
Yeah, I don't know specifically about these lots, but as you can see, they've already got slabs and everything going in. And when I drove out there, it was almost, pretty much already built out. Okay, and one of, one of the, the people that spoke tonight was on this address.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
That corner of the pool right there is about 50 feet off of that property line. So there's, there's room to, there's room to, uh, potentially shift that and, and center it up between, potentially center it up between those lots. You know what I mean? To be an equal distance away. You're probably 150 feet from that property that Logan just said to the northeast from the pool and then 50 feet in the other one. So you could probably, you could probably locate the pool deck to where it's, you know, 100 feet away from, at least from all properties.
Shift it and maybe some landscaping?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, shift it, landscape it. I mean, we're not opposed to fencing it, you know? Um, in, in, in screening it. I mean, the whole point of, of this is, is, is for the community um, and to make it desirable and not burdensome. So, you know, everything I've ever done with these guys, they've always done it first class and typically go above and beyond the minimum requirements in regards to landscaping and screening and those types of things. So, you know, I, I don't see us doing anything different in this particular case either.
If you screen it too much, you're going to create other issues and problems as well. So there's a consideration for that also.
Correct. I mean, part of this, just so you know, is part of this was, um, is they want to link a trail system up through this green space up to the north through there and have this interactive trail that comes up there. There's another open space lot on the other side of, of Markstale to the north there that's kind of bifurcated by a sewer easement. And, and we were trying to get a trail system to cut through there to where essentially everybody to the north would be able to walk on the sidewalks and walk through this trail system to get to here. And then again, you have access from the other ones, you know, the intent hopefully is people are walking, biking and doing that kind of stuff through here, not, not, you know, hopping in their cars and driving, which, you know, folks will do. But I'm trying to get a trail system connected to this as well.
Yeah, I think I would, I'm kind of, I, I, I follow along with the, the one piece of logic that merely ma- makes a lot of sense to me is why didn't this get, you know, planned as this amenity, you know, originally? Or why it doesn't get planned to be put in another part of the property, you know, like move it somewhere else? I can, I can understand that you're, you know, building houses on the other property, and this is already kind of staked out as being a, you know, a recreational sort of areas. And coming in kind of after the fact, after all these people have moved in here, expecting open space to me doesn't go well. So, you know, but, but one mitigation factor that I would have to see, I think, is a, some sort of a really decent privacy fence that's going to, um, you know, block the area away from these, these homes. I could probably, I could go with that, but otherwise I think, you know, re, putting it somewhere else is even a more favorable thing where you could plan it out in the future, people understand and the buyer beware and all that kind of stuff. So.
Well, Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate even to consider maybe postponing this item until the developer has a chance to give this some thought and bring back another plan according to what our suggestions have been? If they do not decide to move it to another area? And the things I'm thinking about is shifting it as far to the east is, it's appropriate. Moving the pool as, has been suggested as an excellent idea to be to the east of the clubhouse and that's all they and an area where they show their fencing.
Privacy, privacy.
Postponed it.
Yeah, more, more than just the safety fencing around the pools, what I'm talking about. I'm talking about a, you know, pretty substantial thing to mitigate the noise and the light and the whole nine yards.
You're not talking about exactly the same thing specifically, at least an eight-foot fence.
Okay.
Uh, would those be conditions that we would place on the use at the time we vote tonight? I mean, really, all we're voting on tonight is, would be the actual use. So would those be conditions that we need to place?
Yeah, it's conditions. That's what I think we're talking about here.
As opposed to postponing it and making them, I mean, really, what we're talking about is the use.
Well, we're talking about the use, but we're also talking about what conditions are necessary to make it compatible with this particular site.
Right.
And so we can, I think, and, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, we can table this for a month to the next meeting to give the developer an opportunity to come up with. I think he's heard the concerns of the neighbors, he's heard the concerns of the planning commission, and see if he can come up with a design on this thing that would be more compatible and meet some of those concerns that we've been talking about. If, if we want to, or we can turn it down, or we can come up with, right now, come up with our own conditions and, and approve it, but place those conditions on it.
I'd, I'd like to see the developer come back frankly, instead of us, you know, trying to dictate it. I kind of, you know, the kinder and gentler us like Mac was talking about earlier. To me, that, that makes some sense to postpone and, and let them think about, because I don't think there's a driving need to make this happen this month, you know? Mr. Bassman mentioned that it's going to be, you know, some time, the timeline's out there a little bit, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to postpone item 17 until our next regular meeting in March. Give the developer time to reconsider this layout and the concerns of the adjacent property owners.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Amber, can you do a roll call on this postponement?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, a motion carries, the motion that carried it is that this will be postponed till a date certain, what's that next meeting, Logan?
I'm sorry, um, next meeting will be.
It will be the 11th.
Okay, date certain to March 11. Okay, now we're on to the last item, which is case PL 2021 00057 Farm Road Elementary Statutory Review Requires No Public Hearing. But over to you, Ms. Kennedy.
Yes. This is just a statutory review of a new elementary school. I'm being presented to you from the Board of Education. The property shown here is currently zoned rural. It came into the city limits last April. Located on Farmville Road. This is the submitted site plan. As you can see, it establishes for turn lanes and deceleration lanes for each interest of Farmville. Uh, there's also proposed future connection to Miracle Road. This site has already come through the development review team process. And the engineers making comments that multiple staff departments have addressed regarding the site plan and overall. There's no outstanding concerns regarding this development, just some minor technical things. Okay. Um, the new fire station is, and this property here, if you can see where my mouse is, I've not personally had any calls, but I think we've had some system communication regarding the development. And the current development is not the school yet. It is the new fire station and that's on the other side of the Mount Sinai Church from this new school location. So they have not started construction here yet.
What's, what's the timeline on this? I didn't notice after looking through here, just out of curiosity. Like when would they start building and moving ground and all that kind of stuff?
I think they're opening bids later this month. So they, I think they made an opening is next, uh, next school year.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Well, that brings us to the end of all of our items. Is there anything? I don't have anything. Is there anything else from staff?
They're on the lookout tonight for an email following up on some items that I covered during packet meeting. Just sending out an updated roster and, um, some information about other dates, potential dates for the last work session for the downtown development and design guidelines.
Okay.
So being on the lookout for that. I started drafting it before the minute of the meeting tonight, but just didn't get a chance to finish it.
Okay. And I'd just like to remind everybody that the hearing at the city council for this STRs is tomorrow night at the meeting. So do tune in if you can and let's see.
Next Tuesday, not, not tomorrow, but Tuesday.
Excuse me, next Tuesday is what I really meant to say. But, uh, yeah, check in on that one. That ought to be interesting. Okay, stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.
We'll see ya.